The item on our agenda tonight, the primary item, is the appointment of a Ward Four representative that will take the place of Brett Smith, as you can see is not here with us and has moved from Auburn at this point in time. At our last meeting, we discussed the procedures for doing that, and I wanted to ask the city manager just for clarification tonight. Ms. Crouch, it is by the law that we have to have five affirmative votes for this nomination, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so it's not a majority.
And that's in this particular form of government in a Class VI city. It's 1143A-16 of the Code of Alabama, says you have to have five affirmative votes.
Sure. And that's important tonight. Mr. Parsons is not with us tonight. He's on a family vacation, and so we have seven members of the council here tonight. So I wanted to make sure everybody understood that. I also made a recommendation to the council, and it was just a recommendation, that the person who seeks this office should not be a person who plans to run for this ward, Ward Four, this summer. In the order that I received these emails, Brent Beard, Ray Huff, Ethan Perdue, and Jennifer Stevens. And I appreciate all four of these individuals willing to serve the City of Auburn. They have all clearly indicated that they have no intention to run for City Council during the summer. So at this point in time, we'll have a regular nominating process. Normally, Mayor Pro Tim Witten handles this, but in this circumstance, I will be the one leading this. I will make a nomination. We'll take other nominations as well, and we'll have discussion, and then we'll vote. Okay?
Could you give me those names again? I didn't catch all those names.
Sure. Brent Beard, Ray Huff, Ethan Perdue, and Jennifer Stevens. All of their emails were in your packet that you received as well. So I will make a nomination, and I'd like to nominate Brent Beard.
Second.
Second. So we will be serving the City of Auburn four months. Having an experienced member sit up here with us and go through these decisions is advantageous. I also believe as we approach the budget time, which is coming up, we have budget hearings next week, and the council will be potentially looking at a first reading of our budget at our next meeting on June 21st. Having a member of our community who has done that before, and Brent has done that a number of times, if you do it twice during a four-year term, I guess he's approved eight budgets during his time of serving the city, that would be advantageous as well. That is one of the most important responsibilities we have as elected officials, is approving the money that the taxpayers give.
I was impressed with the work he would put into that, every budget we reviewed. So I think he would make an excellent choice for the short term.
Thank you. Chief Dawson, anyone else like to speak for Mr. Beard?
I'll echo that. I thought it was a decent idea to bring somebody out of retirement that didn't have any notion going forward, but to be honest, we really hadn't considered the impact the budget will have on the next few weeks or months. And I think that's a solid notion, that some experience there would be quite advantageous. So I think that's a good point.
Thank you, Joe. Anyone else? Okay. Mr. Huff, Mr. Dixon, I believe you made the nomination. I'll see if you've got anything you'd like to say.
Yeah, I've met with, I spoke with Ray Huff over the phone a couple of times about this. He's the only candidate that personally reached out to me. So, and I would say that I've known Ray for a very long time. I think he has.
Anyone else like to say anything about Mr. Huff?
With budgets, over the time, he's been on multiple city activities and boards and commissions and whatnot. And again, he has expressed an interest in serving for this brief period of time, and I endorse his nomination. Thank you.
Sure. Thank you. Anyone else?
I'd like to say also, I have not heard from Mr. Huff, but I do find him to be a very good man who deeply cares about this city, but I'm simply going with the experience that I think we need facing this budget process.
Anything else?
I would just like to say neither candidate reached out to me, but just looking at...
Ms. Crouch, do we do this by voice vote or hand vote, pleasure of the council?
That's your call. So, I mean, we looked up every time in the 25 years I've worked for the city, when we've done this, it's always been done in committee of the whole, at the pleasure of the council. So however you wish.
Okay, we'll do this by hand. So we'll start with Mr. Beard, since he was the first one nominated. So all in favor of Brent Beard, please raise your hand. Okay, before, and then all in favor of Ray Huff, please raise your hand. Okay, so that is a four votes for Mr. Beard, three votes for Mr. Huff, that is not five. So, Ms. Crouch, where do we go from here?
State law clearly says you must have five. So your choice is Councilman Parsons, it is my understanding, will be back in town. He's on a long planned trip for the June 21st meeting. While the state law makes it clear you're to do this at the very next meeting, you can't do it if you don't have five votes for any one candidate, because that's what it was for or against, or not for, however you want to say. Anybody from the majority can ask at the current meeting or the very next meeting for the council to reconsider.
So then I would be in order to ask for a reconsideration of Brent Beard, since there was four to three versus three to four.
That's correct. Just during committee of the whole and not the regular meeting, we're not going to confuse those two.
Well, based on the fact that we have a duty to have a representative for Ward Four, and that candidates or nominees are very viable candidates, (inaudible) Beard to take the position of Ward Four representative for the interim, simply because, as stated previously, his budget experience, we have budget hearings that start on the 13th, which is next week, and we will see the budget come before us on the 21st. It may or may not be voted on on that date. However, we have a duty to make sure that we pass a budget in short order, and a budget that is what we base a majority of our decisions on. So I would like this body to at least reconsider tonight, go ahead and fulfilling our responsibilities to this city, and establishing a person who's already demonstrated that they know the processes. And I will say Brent and I sat together side by side for four years, and there were a lot of times we did not agree. And even before I was on this council, there were moments when I did not agree with Brent. But I do think that he has represented the city with decorum and grace over his tenure.
In a second, any further discussion on the reconsideration of Mr. Beard?
I think it'd be very important, I'm sorry, candidate, I cut you off.
No, go ahead.
I think it's very important to try to come to a resolution tonight because of the budget process looming over next week. However, I do respect if someone feels very strongly that they don't want to change their vote. But I would like to ask Megan, if I may, if I may.
Sure.
What happens if Mr. Parsons comes back and is four to four?
Well, you have an interesting dynamic. We have an Attorney General's opinion from 1985 that all it says is you need to do it, and it means, you know, when all eight of you are here, there are times you could be four-four tied, and the purpose of an odd-numbered council is to be sure you don't have ties and can conduct the city's business.
But I would like to say something.
Go ahead.
You know, in order for me to change my mind, and I hear that, you know, that y'all know this guy Brett, I don't know him, he never reached out to me. So, you know, I'm looking at the resume, and Ray Huff was the only one that actually sent a resume through the email that I've received and everything. So I know more about him just through his resume, where Brett, I just see he sent a letter. Of course, you said he said on the council before, but that still does not make me know him. So I just think that if he was interested in all the council, maybe getting to know him, then maybe he should have reached out to all of us. That's just my opinion.
Well, I would like to interject there. I think the city has excelled in a lot of areas, and financially, stable decisions were made under his leadership. And that is our biggest purview, is ensuring the fiduciary stability of this city. And so I say nothing wrong about, nothing ill about Ray Huff. I think he is an outstanding individual. But for me, it comes down to the confidence of knowing that in the short order and interim, that this, on this dais, we have someone who is up to speed, ready to go, can make decisions, what...
He's three children. Job on this council, and as Beth said, he was here during a time of extensive change and development in our community. He is very wise when it comes to these budgets, and none of this is going to surprise him. He's going to understand these documents, he's going to know what questions to ask. He's going to be prepared to work on these budgets. But I certainly understand, Connie, you don't know him, and so you want some reassurance. I sat with him for six years, and he made some hard-nosed decisions, there's no question about that. But he showed a lot of courage, and he was very committed to his work and what he was expected to do representing his ward.
Well, you know, maybe I need to just actually say to the councilperson who just made this statement about the popularity part, it's not about being popular, but when you don't know somebody, you just don't know them. So I really would have, you sat on the council with him, so there's probably no reason for him to reach out to the ones who did not know him. I think that it would have been a great idea for him to reach out to those people, too. So it's not about...
We vote on people for all boards and commissions that a lot of us don't know them well and don't reach out to all of us. So I just, from that perspective, I just think it's a disservice to discount someone's 16 years of service to the city, who's willing to, who doesn't have to, who's volunteered and put themselves out there to help us through a gap, which we didn't expect to have.
I have a question for the city manager.
Sure.
So this person will serve from now until when?
November 7th, which is the day, it's up until the time whatever elected council members from that ward are sworn in.
It's not like there's an awful lot of changes expected based on our participation on the budget reviews, from my experience in the last one, put it that way. And with the redistricting, Mr. Huff now represents a portion of the citizenry that was not in Ward Four at the time, previously, is that correct?
That's correct.
That is correct. I believe he was in Ward Five last time.
So now we have someone who is living in Ward Four, a new resident for Ward Four, familiar with the city. So again, I strongly support Mr. Huff.
Okay. Anyone else? Look, I'm thankful, under this very unique circumstance, that four citizens from Auburn, four quality citizens from Auburn, wanted to be a part of this. And I appreciate all four of them reaching out to me and raising their hand and saying, "I'll do this if you want to choose me." And so I'm very thankful for every one of these people. Okay. So thankful for every one of these people. Okay. So we'll take a hand vote, and this will be for the reconsideration of Mr. Brent Beard.
Mm-hmm.
All right. So all in favor of Mr. Brent Beard, please raise your hand. So we're still at four.
That's correct.
That is not five, so this will carry forth to committee of the whole on the...
You, and as required in your procedures, and it to June 21st, unless you guys want to call a meeting sooner than that to deal with it. The city attorney has recommended that you must deal with this on June 21st, just based on following state law. The Attorney General's opinion I referenced said, "in a timely manner." So timely manner, your 21 days at that point out from former Councilman Smith's resignation.
Okay. Okay, so council all understands that. All right. Are there any questions on the agenda for the city manager? And I know, city manager, we do have an additional agenda item that...
Mayor, yes, you do. There's just a minor amendment, but it ended up in the minutes that you adopted as Parsons' amendment. This is not a substantive change, but the city attorney has recommended that any change to the minutes be approved by the council.
Okay, so we'll just handle this as we handle resolutions at the, under, or...
It's going to come under other business because it wasn't published with the agenda. So I'll introduce it as normal, all of you have a full packet in front of you.
Okay.
And it's a very, very minor change, but it needs your approval.
Okay. All right. Anybody else have a question for the city manager? If not, is there a move to adjourn? It's your second? All right. We are adjourned from the committee of the whole. It is 6:10, and we'll open up tonight's regular business for the Auburn City Council meeting and the roll call. Lindsey.
Dawson.
Here.
Dixon.
Here.
Griswold.
Here.
Hobie.
Here.
Parsons. Taylor.
Here.
Witten.
Here.
Anders.
Here. Would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and the remain standing for a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Under Mayor Communications tonight, during our committee of the whole, we discussed a replacement for Mr. Brett Smith, who's not with us tonight and has moved from our community, a temporary replacement that will serve the citizens of Ward Four until the end of this term, which will be in November the 7th. We had three applicant, we had four applicants, Brent Beard, Ray Huff, Ethan Perdue, and Jennifer Stevens. The council nominated Brent Beard and Ray Huff. Neither member was, neither citizen was able to get five votes, which is needed for this, and so that we will, readings are going.
So you want to do...
Yeah, if we can just go ahead.
Want to do all this before employee recognition?
Please.
Mr. Witten, can you approach the microphone?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We had our Summer Learning Challenge kick off on Wednesday of last week, and we had estimated 560 attendees that evening. And we also registered about 500 new people for the challenge, and we're now up to almost 1,000, which was our goal for this year. So we're very excited about that, and we're looking forward to a great summer learning season.
Good. Thank you, Ty. Appreciate everything y'all do over there. It's a lot of fun to be with you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Yep. Last Friday, I was able to come over here and join a lot of people from our Public Safety Department as we sent off our Special Olympics athletes to the national competition. It was a lot of fun. What a special group of people. Paul, I really appreciate all your members of Public Safety being involved in making those, the mayor's Memorial Day breakfast. What a great time to be back together again at the Hotel and Conference Center and to have that breakfast, which we've not done for the last two years. Certainly Philip from Economic Development, your staff and their support of this, Andrea in particular, thank you. And Cynthia, thank you for all that you did with the videos and preparing for that day. And David, thank you for everything that your staff did. We had a great day, great breakfast, a great wreath laying ceremony. It was very memorable. I want to say congratulations to Ms. Becky Benton, who is now retired as the United Way of Lee County's director, and look forward to working with Tippi Miller. Becky served our community, I believe, for 25 years, and she's retired recently, and I appreciate everything that she's done to make Auburn a great place. Auburn baseball, as many of you know, won their regional this past weekend. They'll be headed to Oregon this weekend to play Oregon State, and wish them the best, and look forward to staying up late and watching them play this weekend. One of the biggest things that's happened in our community recently is the opening of, is all the people that are over there participating on our playground. I'm just very proud. It's a proud moment to be in leadership in this community and know that this community cares enough about its children and all of its citizens to make that kind of investment in their lives. And I just think everybody that participated and agreed to fund this park, I believe it's going to be a great blessing to many of our families, and it was certainly exciting to be over there, to watch all the happiness that was occurring at that playground. And then finally, I want to say congratulations to two of our SROs, Justin Fant and Levarious Bryant, who were recognized by the Alabama Association of School Resource Officers. Levarious was recognized with a Valor Award, and Justin was recognized with Above the Call of Duty Award. And these are two gentlemen that protect our children every day, and they've got great attitudes, and they are great guys, and they are, should have been recognized, and I applaud their recognition. And Paul, would you tell them that we're very proud of them, too, and thank them for everything that they do? Before we get to the videos, any other council members have an announcement they'd like to make tonight?
I just got the Sun Song Heroes in the area. So I would like for everyone to come out and enjoy all the festivities. Everything is free.
Thank you, Connie. Thank you for your hard work, and I know you've had a lot of help on that.
Yes.
Thank all those folks for jumping in and helping you. Okay. Anyone else?
I have a couple, if I may.
Sure, absolutely.
Since we are in, have new ward lines, I have a host of ward meetings, just so I can touch base with most of the new Ward Three. Not to, these are, there's a lot of details here, but from the city's calendar, on the...
Just the one that is the...
Oh, the Zoom?
The 14th for the Zoom, and then the individual HOA ones can be found on your page.
Yeah, on my social media page. But, and anyway, so that's, we'll be keeping myself busy for those few days.
Good. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, Greg. Proud to recognize our Employee of the Month and all of our other employees.
I'm Mayor Ron Andrews. We're excited to introduce you to our June 2022 City of Auburn Employee of the Month and many other outstanding employees here at the City of Auburn. Today, I have a memorandum from Kristen Reader, Human Resources Director, sent to Megan McGowan Crouch, our city manager, and this is for our June Auburn City Employee of the Month. Patty Liverance joined the City of Auburn in January of 2021 as the HR Business Partner and has excelled in her role. Patty consistently demonstrates a strong desire to serve our employees and ensure that payroll and benefit needs are taken care of. Communication is important to Patty. She also takes great pride in Patty is always willing to tackle projects that can help streamline our processes. A recent example of this is her oversight of implementing e-references to enhancing our hiring process. This allows hiring managers with one click to gather employment references, adding us, aiding us in making sure that we are hiring the right employees. Patty's doing an amazing job for the City of Auburn, is committed to helping the organization succeed in its service to the public. It is for these and other reasons that I am honored to nominate Patty Liverance as the Employee of the Month for June of 2022. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay. It was quite a lot of them.
Must have gone through a hiring search five years ago.
Again, we thank all of our employees for everything they do. We thank Patty. Congratulate her on being Employee of the Month, but thank everybody whose photo you saw there. They add their part to making Auburn a great place to live, so we appreciate their great work. Okay. At this point in time, we'll go ahead and move on to Auburn University Communications.
I definitely encourage you to do that, unless you're a jinx, and then please don't. But anyway, so moving on, Forbes this week ranked us number one on their list of America's Best Employers for New grads, and I'm sure we knew that already, but it's nice to see that recognized at the national level. Also, we had College of Human Sciences students in a grant-making for philanthropists class. They just presented the Domestic Violence Intervention Center with a $3,000 check this week to support their mission of eliminating violence and caring for victims in Lee County and in four surrounding counties. This class is kind of dedicated to helping them get real-world experience with nonprofit work and with grant-making processes and things like that. So we're excited that they chose to put those efforts towards helping members of our community. Also, we had a record 78 Harrison College of Pharmacy students selected for post-grad programs. These programs helped them get further into specialization and additional training and really helped them in their careers. And this is the sixth year in a row for at least 50 to move on to this type of program. Our Auburn student, Matt Lentz, will appear as one of the main characters in a new Disney Plus series this week. It's called Miss Marvel, and it, so do check outreach programs for teachers and K-12 students this summer, and this includes professional development for teachers and camps for students. So if you're interesting, they're interested, there's more information available on CoSam's website, so do check that out. That's all from me. War Eagle.
Thank you, ladies. So much for being slow at Auburn this summer, huh?
Right.
Yeah. Okay, great. All right, this time, we'll, as citizens, communications from items on tonight's agenda. If you'd like to speak to the city council about anything on tonight's agenda, please come forward. We'd like to ask that you give us your name and address for the record, remember that you'll have five minutes. Let's see, there's one item here on our agenda that there's a public hearing involved, and if you'd like to speak to us about that, I'd ask that you please wait for that public hearing. Anyone? Okay, we'll move forward. City manager, communications.
All right, Mayor, just two things. As I announced earlier in committee of the whole, we have added an item of other business under 11, it'll be number 11A, and I'll get to that when we get to other business. And then I'd like to announce that we have one vacancy on the Lee County Youth Development Board. The unexpired term begin...
And when there was a transition a few years ago, and the Gooches came back to lead Auburn University, Ms. Gooch had served on this board for a number of years, and it was not, she was not, it wasn't in the best interest of their time and their family life right then for her to serve on that board. And so Mr. Pelham went ahead and served on this board during that time. Now that Auburn University has a new president, there's a strong indication that Ms. Roberts will be very interested in serving on this board. And so Mr. Pelham has gone ahead and submitted his resignation, and we certainly hope that we can consider Ms. Roberts here in the near future. Yep.
Absolutely.
No one? All right. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Agenda has passed. Ordinances.
We're moving straight to ordinances. Item 9A1 authorizes the installation of six stop signs and 125 mile-per-hour sign in Donahue Ridge, Phases Five, Six, and Seven. Unanimous consent is necessary.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
Second.
Have a motion, second. Anyone on the council have a problem moving forward with a vote on this this evening? Are there any questions? Lindsey with the roll call.
Yes.
Griswold.
Yes.
Hobie.
Yes, ma'am.
Taylor.
Yes.
Witten. Yes.
Dawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Anders.
Yes.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
Second.
Griswold.
Yes, ma'am.
Hobie.
Yes, ma'am.
Taylor.
Yes.
Benton. Yes.
Dawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Dixon.
Yes.
Griswold.
Yes, ma'am.
Anders.
Yes.
Item 9A4 authorizes the installation of one-stop sign in Piper Glen, Phase One. Unanimous consent is necessary.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
Second.
Have a motion, second. Anyone on the council have a problem moving forward with a vote on this this evening? Are there any questions? Lindsey with the roll call.
Dawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Dixon.
Yes.
Griswold.
Yes, ma'am.
Hobie.
Yes, ma'am.
Taylor.
Yes.
Witten.
Yes.
Anders.
Yes.
Item 9A2 authorizes the installation of two stop signs in Link's Crossing, Phases Three and ThreeA. Unanimous consent is necessary.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
Second.
Have a motion, second. Anyone on the council have a problem moving forward with a vote on this this evening? Are there any questions? Lindsey with the roll call.
Yes.
Griswold.
Yes.
Hobie.
Yes, ma'am.
Taylor.
Yes.
Witten. Yes.
Dawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Anders.
Yes.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
Second.
Griswold.
Yes, ma'am.
Hobie.
Yes, ma'am.
Taylor.
Yes.
Benton.
Yes.
Dawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Dixon.
Yes.
Griswold.
Yes.
Item 9A4 authorizes the installation of one-stop sign in Piper Glen, Phase 1. Unanimous consent is necessary.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent. Second.
Have a motion. Seconds. Anyone on the council have a problem moving forward with a vote on this this evening? Any questions?
I, I just got a little, small question.
Yes, ma'am.
Where is Piper Glen? Is that over?
That's, that's in your ward, the one, the new subdivision in your ward.
Okay. So where's this stop sign going?
There's in your packet. There is a absolute diagram that shows you what street it's at, and the city engineer may be. Go ahead, City Engineer Frazier.
Oh, I think I, I think I got it. Okay, all right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, Lindsey.
Hovey.
Yes, ma'am.
Taylor.
Yes.
Witten.
Yes.
Dawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Dixon.
Yes.
Griswold.
Yes, ma'am.
Anders.
Yes.
Under resolutions this evening, item 10A needs to be postponed if a council member is willing to make that motion.
Okay. Is there a motion to postpone? I'll make a motion to postpone. Sir, a second?
Second.
Second. All right. Have a motion. Seconds on that.
The June 21st, right?
The June 21st.
Yes, thank you, Councilman Hovey.
Yes, thank you.
That's great.
Thank you, Mr. Hovey. All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion.
Restaurant with drive-through to be located at 1365 North Donahue Drive in the Comprehensive Development District zoning district with a planned development district overlay. The planning commission unanimously recommended approval at its May 12th meeting. A public hearing is required.
True for approval.
All right, have a motion. A second. This time we'll open the public hearing. If you'd like to address the council, please come forward and give us your name and address for the record. We'll close the public hearing. Any comments or questions from the council?
I, I have a question. Just for, I know the answer, but just for the public record, can we review the closest residential, the distance, the closest residential to this location?
Yes.
Okay.
Mechanism that the loud microphone, it has to be certain distances from residential units and so on, and that is addressed at this time?
Thank you.
It was reviewed by staff already. I don't know what the specific distance is, but it complied with that distance.
Okay. Kelly? Yes, Mr. Mayor. The, the map is showing a, an area, basically a void between that and the adjacent property, and I'm, I understand that's an alley. Is that?
Yes, I'll, I'll have, first, I'll have, and City Engineer Frazier speak to, to what we would call that in terms of, it, it is a private driveway. You see those throughout the city. In essence, it's not a public street. The city does not maintain it. But I'll have City Engineer Frazier speak about it.
Thank you.
Yes, Megan, you are absolutely correct. That is a private drive, and it's actually part of the parcel that gets you back around to the, the frontage of Shipperton Parkway. But it's just a private drive.
Okay. And the vehicular traffic for the Taco Bell would have to access North Donahue by way of.
Can explain that.
I'm glad to be. Yeah, the, the plan that you have before you identifies the access is coming from the private driveway. A change, if the applicant wished to change to North Donahue, for instance, I would consider that a significant and substantive change that would require them to come back through a brand-new conditional use process.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments? Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries.
Item 11A authorizes, well, under other business, item 11A authorizes an amendment to the January 25th, 2022 minutes. The minutes would substitute the name Griswold for the name Parsons on the third page of the minutes, as noted in the agenda item.
Is there a motion?
True for approval.
All right, have a motion. Seconds. Any questions? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries.
Mayor, those are all the items of business we have for you this evening.
Okay. At this time, we'll open up.
Situation, because I was approached, if you will, by Mrs. Taylor in reference to that Ward Four position, and I had given it some thought. But after doing some research based on the way the awards were redrawn after you all approved it earlier this year, I discovered that I do not, no longer live in Ward Four. I live in Ward Two. And that was the reason why I did not go through the process, as was recommended by the mayor, and was stated in an article on, that was posted online by Mr. Deutsch in the Communications Department. I just wanted to make sure that the process, in my research recently, I found out that Tuscaloosa has three African-Americans on its city council. Reason I say that, we love to compare ourselves to Tuscaloosa. And also, as I mentioned during the process, Athens, Georgia, has three on its county city commission. Now, they have 10 members, but they have three African-Americans, 30%. I'm as concerned about minority representation on government bodies as anyone else. So I don't know about the four people, other than the two that you put in nomination tonight, but I would hope and I would recommend that you would consider all four before you vote next week, because I would also, I think it would be good for the city to know about the other two that weren't mentioned, just in respect to them. And I would like to thank Mrs. Taylor for reserving the Frank Brown Recreation Center, just in case it rains, for June.
Thank you. Well, thank you, Bean, but thank the city manager and her staff for making those arrangements to have it at Frank Brown, and I really do appreciate that. So I don't want to get the credit for something, well, I, I did ask about a rain date, but they came up with the place to have it. So I, we, we want to thank them also. Okay? And I have looked at the forecast, and it's supposed to be about 95 degrees on the 18th, with 18% chance of rain. So I've been praying.
Pretty wet last year.
I know.
We were snug. All right, who would be next?
I have five reasons. One is way up here. The other ones are two, three, four, and five. Okay? I, I would assume you'd think there's only one reason I should be here, and the, the income taken away by the council of certain citizens like me, but you would be totally wrong. It's the infringement of our constitutional right by this council that drives me to come to the Auburn council meetings. We are the only country in the world with a constitution that our forefathers and founders of this great nation, where we have unalienable rights, the rights that are rightful, permanently and non-negotiable handled right to use by the one God, our Creator. I appreciate the council allowing us each week, I mean, each council, to do our freedom of speech. I love America the beautiful. Since the first day I set foot on this land, on August the 13th, 1962, in New York, I was born in Germany. I am a U.S. naturalized citizen, came to Alabama at age five, with two of my three brothers and my stepfather, who had adopted this discriminatory ordinance that allows certain citizens in certain areas in the City of Auburn to have short-term rentals while other citizens in other areas are stripped of their rights, like me, not allowing us to have short-term rentals, rights, by conveniently using the zoning maps as a tool. Every time I come to the council meeting, I have more unanswered questions. All seems to derive from a common question, why is the City of Auburn working so hard to enforce Ordinance 3288 by spending so much money and losing income? This is my, this is, I'm going to say, this is my personal feeling, no proof presently. I believe that the city council has been used. I believe that Linda Dean and her group, No Hotels in Our Neighborhood, was also used in passing Ordinance 3288.
Who would be next?